We have a forum for planning board meetings in order. First up for general information, Mr. Dwyer.
That would be, that would be Norman, who's hiding behind Nancy's name there.
I don't have a Zoom account. She does.
So I sent over a brochure, a list of items that we wanted to put up to attract employees.
So why don't you backtrack a bit because the rest of the board isn't, start off with who you are and what you are.
Norm Mogul, Domino's Hadley, 459 Russell Street. I'm the facilities supervisor. We're trying to figure out how to attract employees to work.
No, no offense, sir. Lots of luck.
Well, we're trying everything we can and we want to try to put up a banner or two, some age stakes for the lawn. A flutter flag. Whatever we can do. UMass is kind of backed down from any type of solicitation like a mailing or anything like that. And they're very hard to get a hold of or return calls.
How big will these posters be?
One is a five by three and Domino's has a hiring. Five by eight, which we're going to put on the building. Affixed to the overhang, the blue overhang. One would be on the. I guess it would be masterly side. And one would be on the north side on the front. And the flutter we probably put down by the road. Or just off of the parking lot. And the H signs probably down in that little. I don't even know if you call it grass, but it's a. It's a separation between the sidewalk and and the parking lot.
How long would you be having these things flutter?
Probably when we open. I'm not sure that they're not going to be lit, so they could be taken down after dark. We probably were going to be taking that in and the H signs. And the other banners would be affixed to the building.
Would this be weeks or months or?
We would like to do it through the UMass year. Because the business drops off April, May-ish. So that by then we should have enough employees to carry us through till the next.
By the UMass year, you mean through December or into next year?
Into next year. May, possibly. I don't know how many employees we can attract.
Okay, well, if you don't get any people attracted in the first couple of months. You're kind of. As we say, up the Judah, maybe.
Well, there's different semesters, so second semester.
I don't know that I'd be in favor of giving you. The right to put up this many signs for. The next eight months, if you would. I would have no problem giving you the right to put up these signs for the next, say, through the end of the year. And then you could come back to us in January and see how it's going. How's that?
Okay.
Well, Kim, do we have that kind of an authority now to waive the sign regulation? Because certainly if he gets it, then I can see a flood of people up and down Route nine asking for the same thing. And we'll really.
A lot, a lot. That's a good point, Joe, and that's kind of in a gray area because these could be considered, I mean. I don't know.
I mean, this isn't advertising for the business and I've seen quite a few.
I mean, a lot of companies are putting these signs up without coming to us or something like. You know, Mike's right. This isn't really an advertising sign for the business. It's an advertising sign for help, which is a predicament. I would say the vast majority of businesses are in. And. You know, I mean, if we don't have the authority, I mean, the building inspector may have it.
I don't think he does too. You'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals in that.
Yeah, I know. This is a, this is a tough call. Mr. Dwyer, what's your opinion?
Temporary signs are definitely okay, but there's a limited time for them. And I think that. I'd say, you know, forty-five days. And then come back and tell us how it's working.
That's, that would be a good compromise.
Okay.
So forty-five days from now would be the end of, so Thanksgiving.
Why don't we do December first? Because we got holidays in there. And how long is it going to take for you to get them up, to get them up?
I have them now.
Okay, oh, okay.
I have.
Let's say December first.
That is a Domino's. Hiring sign, if you will.
Okay.
Okay, our, our first December meeting is Tuesday, December sixth. So. I would, what I would ask is that if, if you want to keep them up past that, if there's. Been any merit or they've been of any help, come back to that meeting. And if you don't want to keep them up past that, if it's just. Either. Overachieving, you have more people than you can use, or you're not getting anyone at all. Maybe you just take them down at the end of, after Thanksgiving.
Okay, I know we've done this in the past. And I didn't realize there was a meeting for it. I went in actually yesterday to. Pay the fee to do it. And she said, oh, it's got to go through the planning board. Before we can approve something. I was like, oh, okay.
Well, we'll vote on it tonight and you could go in tomorrow and get your stuff.
Okay, can I be emailed on the, on the findings or no?
Yes, you can. What is your email?
Norman, N O R M A N. Dot Mogul, M O G U L. At gmail dot com.
M O C as in Charlie, you will.
No, M O G as in George.
G as in George, okay. You will.
Correct.
Gotcha. We'll copy you on the email.
Okay.
Wait a minute, let us do the vote first.
So I make a motion to, to approve the signs on a temporary basis, not to exceed December sixth, twenty twenty-two without further approval. Second.
I was writing that down. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
They say aye as well.
Motion passed unanimously. Okay, I'll copy you on the email, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. You can get the. Hiring sign down, Bill.
Okay. Yep, finishing my. My little notes there. So. I'm sorry, I don't remember. Mike Gagnon was the next one in. I'm not sure. He's here for one of the public hearings.
I am. I'm here for the four oh one Russell Street.
Okay, we'll get to that. And then Mr. Richard Kaelin. I'm not sure.
What's up? What's up? Sorry about that.
Are you here for one of the hearings or do you have a question for the planning board?
Oh, I was just interested in the proceedings about the Howard Johnsons.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'll be up in a minute or two.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Spank and Able, you're just here to listen in?
He's here for the Howard Johnsons.
Okay. Okay.
Perhaps the other one as well.
All right, yeah, I would think both of them probably. Okay. Let's see. I have no invoices to pay. Mr. Dwyer, do you have anything special to bring up?
I don't think I have anything. In particular at the moment. No, I don't have anything, anything else administrative at the moment.
Okay.
Be sure I have another pad. I'll allow us out. I did just today get a first draft of the minutes that. Shyla is working on. She is the. Person sitting at the, in the Conservation Commission office and she's also. Giving us some time. So I haven't had a chance to go through them yet. I didn't, I just got it this afternoon.
Okay.
But may have some more. Good news in that department.
Great, that'll be good. Yeah, you're starting from the most recent of working backwards?
What I. It's actually easier to work forwards, I found. So what I, what I suggested she start with is from when Mark joined the planning board.
Okay.
And so that's just like getting a couple of years caught up. And then depending on how well that works, then she can go back to. The, when I just ran out of. A time to do them and get them up through there. And then I can chip away at some of the real oldies. You know, I looked through some of the minutes. We had a whole. A whole page, one, one page for the whole meeting. So those are the good old days.
Yep. Okay. Get close up to six forty-five. We'll reopen the public hearing for. The four oh one Russell Street former Hojos. And I'll turn it over to the appropriate parties.
Yes, good evening, Mike Gagnon, for the record with SLR International. I'm a principal civil engineer. Also with me this evening on the call is Curt Shumway, the project proponent. From Amherst Development Associates. So I think what I would like to do is just basically cut to the chase and give you some updates. First of all, I believe you should have received the peer review letter from Berkshire Design Group. Simply stating that we've addressed all of their technical peer review comments. Specifically with the stormwater analysis. They had some comments relative to analysis points and ensuring that there was consistency. With the respective flow rates for, for pre versus post. Consequently, that also required a revision to the grading at the site entrance drive. And I can, I can go through that in a moment. When I share my screen, I can share with everyone the. The updated set of drawings and just kind of go through some of the, some of the revisions that have occurred as a result of peer review. But also some of the changes that we've incorporated that, that you requested during your August sixteenth hearing. In addition, on this evening, we also just received some comments from your fire chief. I can kind of go through those in detail in terms of. You know, what, what the appropriate actions would be, but I think the good news there is, I think we can accommodate all of the points. That he has brought up in his, in his email correspondence. And then the last thing, just we have a continued hearing with the Conservation Commission. Next Tuesday, which is the eleventh. And, you know, they're, they're waiting to essentially close that hearing pending resolution or, or pending your actions. With the planning board. So with that, what I can do is I can just share my screen, if I may.
Go ahead.
Okay, you should see a set of drawings. So this is the latest set of drawings, which you've all seen before. And like I said, I will just walk through. Some of the changes, again, the existing conditions plan. This plan essentially just shows the removals of the existing structures, pavements, et cetera. This is our site layout plan, which, which basically also incorporates the proposed plantings for the site. And one of the things that I would like to zoom in here is we've updated the tree schedule here. I believe one of the comments that you raised during the previous meeting was the caliper size of some of the trees seemed somewhat aggressive. Based upon, you know, what was available from nursery stock and what have you. So. Our landscape architects took a look at that. We've pared down those, those calipers accordingly. So hopefully those, those look a lot more reasonable to you. Other than that, not really any other noteworthy changes to this plan. This is our grading and utilities plan. Again, one of the things that we did do is up here at the main entrance drive, which I'll show in a minute. We've got an inset in the details that shows the grading treatment at the driveway so that we contain all of the site runoff. On the site and thus not prevent any additional flows of runoff to Russell Street, which was one of the comments. That, that Berkshire Design had. This is our sedimentation erosion control. No noteworthy changes here either. Just drilling into, hang on, just wanted, yep, just want to make sure I didn't miss a sheet. Sedimentation erosion control details, no changes there. Some of our pavement and sign details. And again, I'm going through these quickly. So, you know, please stop me if you got any specific questions that you may have. But what I'd like to do, so what we added on CHS D four. Is we did some micro grading essentially at the entrance to essentially demonstrate that all of the runoff from the site will. Be managed by a trench drain that will be located under the sidewalk here and then flow into a stormwater management basin one. Which is located across the front of the building. So essentially we created a little bit of a high point here at the entrance drive. So that all of the gutter flow is contained within Russell Street. And thus the runoff from the site is managed accordingly as well. Here's a detail of what that trench drain looks like. It essentially is going to be a gutter inlet through the side of the sidewalk. With a piece of plating that, that will be constructed over, over that trench. This detail shows the, the site lighting. We've, we've been working with our site lighting vendor who we've used on many projects. This is, this is the site light fixture that will be provided on, on the site. It's a fifteen foot high. Pole with, with a fixture essentially is going to be an LED fixture that will be mounted. And these are the typical photometric patterns from, or light distribution from the fixture. So that essentially any light wash will be minimized to adjacent areas. So those are, those are some of the highlights in terms of the revisions to the site plans. Any questions or comments?
Just curious, I saw the first floor level, there was a number there, one sixty-six. What, what was that? Back up to. One more.
Yeah, this is the finished floor, first finished floor elevation.
Was that above sea level?
Yeah.
Well, based on, these are the, these are the grades throughout the remaining, so that, you know, the floor elevation is going to be about. About eight inches higher than the parking lot grades.
Yeah, it's got to be above sea level.
Is that a sea level elevation or relative elevation to the property?
No, it's above sea level. This is NGVD. Yes, it's based on Massachusetts vertical datum.
So North Hampton Airport's a hundred and twenty-eight or a hundred and twenty-nine feet.
Right, well, the center of the Hopkins is right around a hundred and twenty, well, the parking lot at Hopkins is right around a hundred and twenty-seven feet.
Well, the reason I'm asking is that this is in nineteen thirty-eight. Allegedly Route nine had some water going over it. Was that, would that be reasonable or is that just speculation?
Well, we did check, you know, as part of our due diligence for this project, one of the things that we look at obviously is FEMA mapping with respect to the hundred-year flood zone. And that doesn't occur. On this particular site in the building. In other words, there's no infringement of the hundred-year flood within the site area.
Joe, you're correct, though. Joe, this is Kurt. You are correct. There was a flood back then. But the, the flood level from the river is stated before. It's in the mid one twenties, something like that. So we're, we're, we're okay here.
Yeah, I, I realized that. Plus, the. The FEMA regulations now have downgraded. The one thirty-eight flood because of the flood control dams further north. So I was just wondering. More speculation than questioning.
So Mike, have you sent us this final set of plans?
I believe we have with our response back to Berkshire Design. If not, I can provide them to you.
Yeah, if you could just send a, a clean email. I sometimes do not check all the attachments when it's, when we're just being copied on something going through to someone else.
Okay.
So if I could just get a, a complete set, I'll go back through my, my stuff, but it's always easier to have, have. A definitive email from you saying that this is the final.
Gotcha. Be glad to do so. And I can send you, like, for example, the final engineering report as well, which is all the, the updated stormwater computations that have been addressed. As a result of peer review.
I like the micro grading that was. At the northeast corner. So that's basically covering what would be in that little parking area at the entrance.
Yeah, so that, that, if you see this note here, basically refers to that. So it's really just a blow up of this area. Let me just jump to that. So this is. This is what that looks like.
And the chances of that overflowing, is this, this is higher than the, the invert out on the other side of that water quality swell or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good solution.
Other, other questions? Signage, Mr. Shumway, you were planning coming back to the signage. We're not going to put the signage at this point because you don't know who's going to be here.
Yeah, you were asking me about signage. Yeah, I think we discussed once we get a tenant, depending on what that tenant needs are, whether it's. They take the whole building or we have multiple tenants. Yeah, I think that's what we agreed to, yeah.
Okay. Even some of the features, the building might change a little bit too from what you said last time.
Correct, correct.
That's fine. All right. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, Mr. Dwyer?
For, I will make a motion to, oh. Before we do that, I know that there's back and forth with Chief Spankable on this. Are we? Mike, are you okay?
Yes, so essentially, one of the things relative to accommodating the ladder truck that the chief provided. We actually ran a large WB fifty truck into the site to be able to get to this loading area. What I did offer, and I believe I copied you in on the, on the email that I replied back to him, is we will run his ladder truck. Through the site to demonstrate that the interior radiuses of the aisle and should, you know, should accommodate his vehicle as well, which is, which is actually smaller. Or has, you know, smaller turning radiuses than a WB fifty, but we can certainly do that to demonstrate that there's. You know, that there's clear access within the site. The other questions that he had was, you know, he. He got into some specific questions about. Like Siamese connections and building connections. And I think those really have yet to be determined and, you know, we can work those things out. Once we, once Kirk gets a MEP on board with the final architectural drawings. Because they're going to have to demonstrate that they comply with the NFPA fire code with respect to, you know, flows. They're going to require for the sprinkler service and what have you. And then, you know, just some of his other questions, you know, maintaining a minimum twenty, twenty-foot wide aisle width. We've accommodated that all of our aisle widths inside of the, the site are twenty-four feet. You know, that would include the driveways between the parking spaces. The main driveway coming in here is twenty-four. The other question was, you know, wanted to ensure that the access to the adjacent staple site was going to be maintained. And as you know, we are accommodating that as well. So. You know, that, that's kind of my quick response to some of his comments. And, you know, like I said, we can, we can share with you that, that turning template. Once it becomes available, which we should be able to do in the next couple of days.
I don't see a dimension on your east-west. Isle that goes right along the south face of the building. Yeah, is there a dimension there? That's, I mean, I, I trust you that it's twenty-four. I just don't see it anywhere.
Yeah, I could actually tell you what it is.
Well, it's okay. I just think it would be good if you added that on the drawings so that it's there for everyone to.
Yeah, we can, we can add that dimension so that, you know, that's.
That's probably the most important aisle.
Right. Correct. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we have to, we have to provide a minimum of twenty-four feet wide, you know, within the interior parking aisle. So this is twenty-four, but we can add that dimension as well.
That would be good.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, WD fifty means nothing to me. What, how big is a WD fifty vehicle?
That's a fifty, that's, that's basically a tractor, trailer combination. It's basically a fifty-foot-long trailer.
Also, that's a fifty-four, not a fifty-three, then that's what that means.
Right.
And aren't the straight bodies actually have a worse turning radius?
That is correct. Actually, the fire chief's on the meeting right now, Mr. Gagnon. So yes, if you could take a look at it, because our turning radius is not the same as the truck that you're specifying, but I'm sure, I'm sure it'll be fine. The only other question that I had was the distance off of the driveway to the building and what your total building height's going to be. Because we, you know, we have a seventy-five-foot ladder. That's it right now. So we just wanted to make sure that we have access to the, not sure what, what the height is.
Yeah, we, the, the maximum building height has to comply. We actually may have it right here on the drawings.
Forty-two, I thought.
Forty-two feet max. Yep.
That's, that's the top, that's very, the max height of. There's no parapet, no nothing above that, correct? That's the max height?
That's the maximum height, yeah. And that's, that's per the zoning regulations.
The only reason why I had. The only reason why I had mentioned the fire department connection is that you're kind of limited on the front elevation because it's all plantings and grass. And I mean, we can work on that. It's just we might have to adjust some of your your parking spaces. And that's why I wanted to make sure you were aware of it for, you know, clear access to that connection. That was the only reason why I brought that up. Where it's certainly amenable to moving it to a different location on the building, though.
Sure, okay.
Anything else from anybody? All right.
Okay, so I will uh make a motion to approve um based on the following findings. Project satisfies general purposes of the bylaw, not detrimental to the established or future character of the neighborhood. Intended uses are not prohibited by the bylaw and are permitted thereby. Work will be uh conducted in accordance with the following plans, and what I'll do here is just itemize the plan list from the peer review letter. Uh, copies of the site plan have been distributed as provided. Um, proposal satisfies site plan review criteria. Um, I don't believe any waivers were requested. Now, I add the design feature, the supplementary conditions, design features, including but not limited to landscaping, specifically including tree caliper, are considered to be an integral part of the approval and uh be considered a violation of the time of the terms of site plan approval if any changes are made without prior approval. Uh, no sign deal detail has been provided. Um, the obligation of future tenants or management accommodating future tenants. Um, landscaping installed, maintained or replaced per the plan. Uh, landscape shall be verified by the planning board or its representative prior to issuance of a permanent occupancy certificate. Uh, any outdoor lighting fixture uh shall be shielded so it does not produce a strong direct light beyond property boundaries. No storage trailers, uh shipping containers, temporary or permanent structures, or any other facilities not uh depicted on the approved site plans are not allowed. This approval uh does not excuse the project from compliance with any other provisions of the heavy zoning bylaw not specifically addressed herein. So this is subject to approval of other boards if and as required, including um for inspection services, public safety, Department of Public Works, Board of Health, Water Commissioners, and state agencies. Any project uh changes directed by other boards must be approved by the planning board. Uh, prior to application for permits, applicant will participate in the pre-construction uh conference, the project's coordinating group through the Office of Building Commissioner. Uh, one set of approved site plans shall be maintained on site during construction for the exclusive use of the zoning enforcement officer. Project will be reviewed for compliance by an independent consultant on behalf of the planning board. Uh, certificate of compliance issued by the consultant will be required before issuance of a permanent CO. You'll maintain a minimum six-inch depth of the topsoil and all unpaved surfaces in order to retain irrigation. Required fright yard setbacks will be identified prior to construction with permanent readily visible monumentation. So that any encroachment by structures or parked vehicles uh can be avoided. And the approval should not become effective until the notice of uh uh till the applicant's engineers certifies that the conditions set forth herein are noted um and incorporated into the site plan, and the original is signed by the planning board. Uh, chair or clerk and copies of the signed original are filed with the planning board and the building inspector. That's it.
Bill, can we add a clause requiring them to come back when they finalize their building exterior elevations?
Oh, yeah, and signage.
Uh, signage is in no sign deal detail has been provided. Uh, and it'll be up to, it'll be a future. And uh I think we we've covered it. The design features, including but not limited to landscaping, drainage design, exterior colors, roof lines, doors and windows are considered to be an integral part of the approved design. Any deviation from the plans as presented and approved will be considered a violation unless the changes are approved beforehand.
All right, so that covers us.
I would think so.
That that if they decide they want to use a different colored brick, they have to come back and uh show us the color.
And no offense to Mr. Someway, I'm, you know, I I have high degree of confidence that he would not do something that we would agree with, but we can't be capricious. We have to treat him as we would treat everyone else.
Work. Okay. Any other comment? That is the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good night.
Any idea when you might start construction, Kirk?
Gotta get a tenant. We have to get a tenant first.
Yeah, okay, details.
Good. That that gives you an idea. Don't don't try to watch the paint dry. It's a tough, it's a tough environment right now.
Yeah.
So.
I'll kick somebody out of Outwood, and I know somebody that would take space in Outwood.
Oh, yeah.
It's an joke.
Yeah, yeah. It's all leased up over there, though. We've got another gold lead about seventy-seven thousand, so you want to take half that?
Probably not.
Good night, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Someway. This looks very nice. We look forward to this improvement.
Good job, Mike Gagnon, too. Yes, good job.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Squire, reopen the public hearing for thirteen Russell Street.
Yes, good evening, folks. Um, so, yeah, just for the record, Jeff Squire from the Berkshire Design Group here on behalf of Triangle Properties LLC. Um, looking at thirteen Russell Street, um, and if I can share my screen. So again, just real quickly, this was, um, this is the existing site, um, at the corner of of Russell Route Nine and and Bay Road. It's a small triangular parcel here. Um, what we had looked at and talked about the last hearing was this plan here, which provided an entrance off of Route Nine, circled through and exited onto Bay Road. Um, there were some concerns and comments about stacking um out onto Route Nine in addition to some other comments. And so, um, I will um show you this plan, which was circulated last week, which looks at adding an additional curb cut on Bay Road and removes that westernmost curb cut um that we had shown previously. We are trying to retain the uh the other curb cut on Route Nine for emergency access. Um, it does, you know, to be able to get uh an emergency vehicle in and around the site, as you can appreciate, is is rather challenging, given the small nature of the site. So we're leaving this one open, and the idea is that the space between, you know, what we really need for, I can, I can zoom in here a little bit. Um, in this twenty-two-foot width, this area would be um would be proposed as like a turf pave unit, you know, something that is drivable, but looks like, you know, looks like the rest of the turf around it. Um, so that it could facilitate emergency access or vehicle access if needed to get by the building and and through the site. It would certainly not be a, you know, a uh an entrance or exit that would be used on a, you know, an everyday basis. Um, and so the the idea is that this would be a one-way entrance on on this end. They would circulate in through the site and and exit back out onto onto Bay Road. In this location, still providing um access through here to get to these parking spaces. Um, anybody in these space would back out and then also exit out at Bay Road. We did look at um a couple of other locations to to put this curb cut or the entrance and and configure stacking. And so just to give you a little bit of the geometry background that um that complicated things a bit. One, there's a utility pole basically right where my cursor is right now. Um, so that, you know, eliminated, you know, access, at least in that central location. Um, the other complication was, you know, one, trying to bring cars in 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 here, passing by vehicles that are backing up and then trying to make this this turn here um was was pretty difficult, particularly with a, you know, with the larger SUVs. So you lost a bunch of the site, you know, that 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 is currently available, um, you know, down at this at this end of the of the triangle, if you will. Um, but what did work was was this location that allows cars to come in and and exit out, you know, very simply and and preserves emergency access.
How many feet off of Route Nine is the new curb cut coming in there?
Uh, let's see, that's a good question. Um.
And what's the speed limit coming off of uh the bridge at that point? I just, do people have time to slow down? That's my question.
Sure. No, it's a legitimate question, and I I don't know specifically the answer to that. I try to look that up quickly, but I don't know offhand. Yeah. And then there were a couple of other questions, comments um at the last hearing. Uh, one was, um, is there a proposed propane tank that will be part of this this building? The answer is no. Everything will be electric. There's there's very little need for, um, you know, for propane or or any of those types of of um utilities. Uh, emergency access, again, just we we are leaving this opening here to allow, you know, an emergency vehicle to get get by and pass the building and through the site easily, but it's not intended to be a, uh, you know, a serviceable um, a service entrance, if you will. Um, and then lastly, parking, there was um just clarification on the parking requirements and the need for TDR. So the building square footage, just the building itself, is five hundred and ten square feet. They are showing storage on the second floor. I don't know whether all of that, I think some of that is is, you know, dormered. Uh, you know, eve space, so it may or may not be usable, but regardless, um, if we consider two uh, two floors, um, the stairs, the exterior stairs, which occupy about eighty-five square feet, and then the deck, the exterior deck, which is an additional hundred and eighty-six square feet, there's twelve, one thousand two hundred ninety-one square feet, uh gross square feet that we need to um provide parking for. Um, are two times that. So we need to provide twenty-five hundred eighty-two uh square feet of parking. And so in this area here and this area here, there is two thousand two hundred ninety square feet. Um, you know, understanding that this is primarily a drive-through establishment, but nevertheless, we're short two hundred ninety-two square feet of parking. So if there's a need for TDR um for for that square footage, then um, that would be, that would be the amount. Um, and I think that wraps up my notes, at least from the last meeting, unless there was anything I missed. But happy to entertain any other questions or comments.
How many square feet of parking are you actually providing?
Two thousand two hundred ninety.
Okay.
And we don't know how quickly cars are gonna be able to slow down as they come off of the bridge. You gotta make, you got maybe, you got maybe thirty yards to to slow down there, okay?
Although it's better than Route Nine.
Yeah, it's better than Route Nine, but you get my drift. People come flying off of uh the bridge and
I mean, what, one of the goals, or at least one of the things that we heard, is try to increase the the stacking length, which this does. Um, you know, I certainly don't dismiss the concerns. It's, you know, it's certainly a valid concern. Um, again, we're we're pretty challenged with the geometry and configuration of the site, obviously. You know.
How how wide is the paved portion of Old Bay Road at that location?
Uh, I would have to guesstimate, it's probably eighteen feet. This section here.
It's, it's probably a little bit wider, because it used to be two uh, you know, lanes, two lanes.
Right.
It's only one way.
How much of the existing gas station building are you keeping? Just the foundations or?
Just the slab, yes, exactly.
And if you built new, what kind of, uh, with the setbacks, what kind of space do you have?
Not much at all.
That's what I suspected.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's obviously the, one of the big constraints or, you know, challenges with this site is is um trying to, you know, trying to realize some value in it and and given the the obvious constraints.
You know, sometimes, unfortunately, we make bad investments. I've certainly made a few over my life. And I I know that rumor had it, had it that there was an offer of for this property from the Pride people, and and it was declined. Uh, so we're really trying to accommodate you here, but my goodness.
To to follow up on Jim's question, Jim, you never did complete the uh your thought that, so two thousand nine hundred and uh ninety square feet of parking is available. From what was the total and what will be the ultimate cost for the TDR? Is that what you were getting at?
Well, I mean, if they're gonna do TDR, they're gonna buy an acre of farmland.
Yes.
Because we don't sell it in pieces.
But that but they, there, he could contribute to the uh the preservation of the farmland like we've traditionally done in the past.
The the advertisement included a TDR. Okay, so they're gonna buy an acre of TDR.
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify that. I don't, I didn't mean that, at least the advertisement wasn't something that we had put in the in the application. We weren't anticipating having to do TCR, TDR, so I think that was something that was put in by the by the town.
That's correct, because when I looked at the property, it didn't look like you were meeting the, the, you didn't look like you had enough parking because it's not the, you have the two-story buildings. So I said, well, to cover ourselves, I'll include the TDR. If you don't need it, no harm, no foul. But if you need it, it's been advertised as part of a TDR.
So it's roughly ten thousand dollars that'll cost them for that acre.
Right, so we're either gonna have to reduce the size of the building, come up with more parking, or contribute to TDR. It'll be their choice. So I don't know if you want to make that decision tonight, Mr. Squire, or do you want to go back and think about it?
I mean, we can certainly show more parking. Um, you know, we have, we have some space to do it. I don't, you know, I I I guess in the in the name of, uh, you know, sort of sustainability and appropriate use of the site, it doesn't seem like it would be a very useful thing to do on this site, but we can certainly expand parking.
Now, re- remember, you don't need to actually pave it. But you need to provide viable space that could be called future parking or reserved or or whatever we we we've called it, but you need to provide that space and not include it, and it could be green space for the time being. If you don't think you need it, but it needs to be delineated on the drawing, on the drawing and usable somewhere.
Sure. So I think we can probably provide that on onsite. That shouldn't be a a tall lift.
I mean, you're three hundred and what, three hundred seventy feet short shy or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Um, lighting?
We are showing one pole light with two heads in the center island location right here. Um.
Are we looking at the, at the right screen? I'm seeing L three.
Is that the whole?
Yeah, I was trying to find the um, the detail of it. I'm sorry. So this, this is the fixture here, but it's a, you know, a downlit LED fixture.
Right, this typical shoebox type white lighting, right, okay.
Now, with the alteration of the new driveway, uh, I've noticed that the detention pond is that gonna be eliminated?
Well, the the one in question, I think, was this one on the town property primarily, so that would go away, yes.
So those that.
These two internal ones would remain, as would this larger, you know, depression on the east side. And again, we're just, we're, we're essentially providing curb openings to allow water to collect in these areas, but they're not true detention basins. We really don't have the ability to to drain these beyond, you know, infiltrating.
So what'll happen to the water?
Well, the lint. Well, they'll infiltrate. I mean, we've got, the soils are decent enough where it will infiltrate. But they're not, you know, they're, they're not designed or engineered per se as a, as a detention basin. It's, it's to try to encourage infiltration onsite and manage as much as we can onsite. But again, we're, we're very limited in terms of what we can do. So we've tried to direct stormwater, you know.
I mean, I, yeah, I realize it could, do you have the, how do I say this? Do you have the updated drawing? I mean, you're showing the old drawing with the new, with the new pond, you're trying to explain it. You have a drawing that shows what's going to be constructed.
Well, I, I. Uh, yes, no, again, I, um, this plan here is, is the one plan that shows, you know, the revisions. We didn't regrade this. You know, this detention area stays the same. Everything else stays the same on excite, except for the loss of that rain garden and this curb entrance. Everything else.
I'm seeing L C.
That shows what's gonna be constructed. Besides just the parking.
This one here.
Yes. That's the only one you, you know, that, that doesn't show any of the, of the drainage areas or the, or the retaining areas, whatever you want to call them.
Right, right, because I, again, I, it was, it seemed like there was some discussion to be had about this curb cut location. And the, the one thing that, the only thing that changes is this area here. Everything else, everything else stays the same. So we can update all of that. If this.
That would be great, just to, just so we can see it in one drawing. I mean, I understand you want to get the opinion of how the curb cut worked before you go any further.
Right.
That's fine, okay, understandable.
So if somebody is coming, I think the speed limit there is thirty-five miles an hour. And we figure you got thirty yards to slow down. Is that possible? Going thirty-five miles an hour, thirty yards to slow down and take a left.
It is one way, right?
One way.
Well, it's, it's, it's wide enough for a two-lane road, so if the I'm assuming there's gonna be some signage. I mean, they had the welcome sign, probably. First of all, I don't think it's needed because there's a heavily welcome sign across the street.
Right.
So they could put some kind of a sign that says on their property right in a corner there, and, you know, about the coffee station. Um, people are gonna know what's there. They're gonna take the right onto Bay Road. And they're gonna have to know after they've gone this way a couple of times, are they gonna still, why is it gonna be right there?
Yeah, it's tough because you really don't have any, we can't even let you have a directional sign on town property.
Right.
So, um.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
You're just gonna have to rely on building signage and uh, I guess whatever you can paint on uh, we'll accept paint as uh, on town property is directional, I guess.
Jeff, could you make the entrance? Uh, could you bend it toward the west? So it's and bend your exit toward the east? Because right now they're ninety degrees and it's a one-way street, so that's gonna cause excessive slowing to make that turn. I'm just wondering if you could make that more of a sweep, right, to enter.
Sure, I mean, this, I think this radius could certainly be opened up. I, my only concern would be making this too easy for cars to get into that they've come in at a, you know, too high a speed, if that's the case.
You're trying to slow them down, okay.
Yeah, but I mean, I, we, we could certainly open this up a little bit.
I would maybe open up the exit because if they're coming out and people are coming off of Route nine, they might want to be able to, you know, hit the gas a bit as they're pulling out instead of having to make a hard left. I see your, you know, I'm okay with the slowing them down entering the site, although that is, as Mike said, it's a bit of a hazard, but, you know, again, the rules of the road are you don't go any faster than the guy ahead of you, and if his brakes go on, you, you slow down, so.
Yeah. That's why I, I drive this way home, you know, from, from work every night and have, you know, paid attention to this location and just how, you know, how fast cars do go down this road and the width of that, that, you know, that paved section. And, you know, there are certainly nights where, you know, cars are zipping along. And, um, you know, it, it's, you can appreciate the concern about the speed, but I also have noticed that there is sufficient width there to pass. And so I think, you know, the, the hope would be that people, if, if you have to slow down and there's speeding cars behind you, that you would move over to the left side and, you know, enter the site.
I think Mark Dunn's suggestions to uh both the entrance and the exit make a little gentler curve there. And that's a good suggestion, Mark.
Yep.
So I did ask um if the traffic study could say something about stacking. I don't think you've touched on that. I, I looked at the traffic study. Basically, it says, yeah, we're gonna harvest the through traffic. But it didn't specifically talk about the stacking issue.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I guess, I mean, I did speak to somebody over there and they weren't entirely sure how to address the comment other than saying that there's, you know, room for X number of cars of stacking. Um, the ability to stack X number of cars on the site. And, um, you know, beyond that, it would be, you know, it could be potentially hazardous in, in the roadway, depending on you know, how those cars, but there's no, there's no um ITE standard, if you will, as to a stacking length or stacking distance or a certain number of cars. So it's hard for them to reference, you know, typically in those, in those traffic reports, they're, they're based on, you know, data from, you know, established, um, as, as established locations, and there isn't any of that for stacking necessarily. There might be for particular businesses or chains, but given that this is an independent, you know, coffee shop, that's not a Dunkin' Donuts or a Starbucks, uh, it, it's really hard to gather any information about it. So we did reach out and, you know, I can, I can reach out again if there's more specific, you know, questions, but it seemed like.
This, this is more a, a kind of a rush hour question, you know, in the morning.
Yep.
Uh, seven thirty to nine, that's when you've got people going to work over the bridge and wanting a cup of coffee, okay?
Sure.
I think.
And, and I'm, I'm not disagree with you, Mike. I, I guess all I'm saying is that their report is gonna say you can fit X number of cars and, you know.
Sure.
There's no standard to, to say that that's enough or not enough. So it's, I can appreciate their, you know, their predicament.
Yeah.
Is this in a floodplain?
Uh, yes, it is.
Mr. Snake and Able, do you have any questions?
I do. Uh, I just had a question in regards to, uh, are you just anticipating eastbound traffic? Uh, is there actually a left turn allowed heading westbound to go onto Bay Road?
Uh, left turn.
Off of Russell Street, so you're only anticipating eastbound traffic now that you're closing off of the uh, the Russell Street side?
Correct.
They'd have to go up and go around the rotary and come back over the bridge.
Right.
There is a turning lane, a left turn lane at the marina. And uh, there is uh, someone who really wanted that particular cup of coffee could uh, turn across traffic at the marina, get back on to Route nine westbound, uh eastbound and uh, come down here and then go through the light and get back on, but.
Just know we have a pretty serious issue with people taking a left turn onto a crosspath off of Route nine. Even though there's a, you know, a no left turn there. So I was just, just wondering about that. Um, do you have any different options for that access, that accessway? I mean, do you, I mean, we're open to other options for that, if that's, if there's something different you'd want to do. I don't know if, if there's any rules under planning for uh, you're talking about using some sort of a gravel or something like that?
You're talking here, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Would you be labeling that as emergency access only, or were you planning on putting a couple of ballards up or?
I, I think, I think the talk was either, you know, signage noting emergency access and or, you know, some temporary planters or something. Um, you know, something definitely not, not permanent. Um, the ballards, I guess there was concern that those would be too, too permanent.
We did do that at the senior center with a breakaway chain, so if that's something you're interested in, and we also did it at the Chinese immersion school for our second access. So if you, I mean, if there's no, if there's no issues on the planning board side, we can certainly work with you on that.
Yes, yeah, those, those are fine, Mike. I will take us up to something long that even, we have the, the temporary uh over on Grand Oak, there's an emergency access with the, with a chain across.
Yeah, the plastic chain and that's also between the Legion and the.
Right.
Correct, yep.
So Chief, how about the uh, how about the two Bay Road entrances? Uh, I see that you, you have twenty-two foot access from Route nine, but it's only twelve feet and fourteen feet respectively uh off of Bay Road. Okay, we, we were talking about uh the requirement being for all wider access on the prior project, weren't we?
Correct. Yeah, your fire lanes, we would have to have a discussion with the, um, yeah, it's under NFP, it is required to be a minimum of twenty feet. So, I mean, we'd have to have a discussion on that. Obviously, it's such a limited site, but I mean, we do, we have to, it's, it's a case-by-case basis. We can, we can amend it. Uh, but technically, I kind of agreed with um what Mark Dunn said about opening up that uh, that first entry there. Making a bit of, you know, a bigger swill, because we did have to come around with our ladder truck or open both a little bit more. But we could work, we can work with you to see what, as long as we have one accessway in there with that clear you know, so that we can actually put our outriggers out on our ladder truck if we have to extend it. And so our access off of Route nine, if you have your twenty-foot there minimum, and then in front of the building, that would, in my opinion, would be sufficient.
But you don't have twenty feet in front of the building, do you?
I, I don't know. I haven't, I actually haven't, I can't, I can't see it from.
I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, there's only about twelve feet here. I mean, and keep in mind, this building is only nineteen feet tall, is the, it's a pretty, pretty small building.
Correct.
Part, part of it is they, they respond with what they have available and staff, not what fit on the site necessarily.
Sure. Yep, understood.
You know, back to Bill Duvaris' point, uh, the, the right turn uh into Aquavita, is there any way of remarking Route nine to some way accommodate slower traffic getting to the right? So there won't be any jockeying for position going from, you know, from the center of the highway, trying to cut back and get a cup of coffee. Uh, is that at all possible? I know that was recommended by someone from Balthazar Construction. Crew, so uh.
What's that, Joe? Like a suicide lane?
Well, somehow, you know, right turn lane, stay to the right or something. And extend, I'm not sure if, how it could be done, but uh to guide the people more to the right, rather than having somebody in the center lane try to shoot over and just the thought.
I'm not sure I followed. Were you talking about eastbound or westbound?
Uh, if you're coming over the bridge.
Yeah.
And uh, there there's two lanes coming over the bridge.
Oh, right. Oh, I see what, what you mean. As you come past Marina, right lane, you know, right turn from right lane only. Not that the right lane has to be a right turn, but.
Yeah, something like that, and you could do some markings to make it a little bit safer. To try to alleviate Mike's concerns as, as well as Bill's. But overall, I think, Jeff, you've addressed a lot of our concerns, you know, the, certainly the stacking on Route nine is, is one. And uh, it's a tough site, there's no question about it. And uh, you know, if somebody's coming too fast, I don't know if that's a significant enough of a concern to deny this whole project. So uh.
Well, I mean, if somebody's speeding.
That's their problem.
We're, we're, we're hard pressed to deny something because somebody's an idiot.
Well, I'm not saying somebody's speeding, they're going to speed limit and they got thir- thirty yards to slow down, take, take a left.
Well, that's why we're suggesting some kind of marking to stay on the right.
Yeah.
And there, it's gonna be too late. Just the thought.
Sure. Well, I'll try the coffee. Josie has there had a cup of coffee in his life, but I'll try it.
I'm just concerned about the, I mean, I think we've done the best we can on those vehicle circulation, but this is in a floodplain. How much do we let go of that? Because it's grandfathered.
That, that's a conservation question, not ours.
Okay, okay.
So remind me.
I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with you, Mark, and that's a good point, but that's a conservation issue.
Okay.
Remind us, Jeff, where do you stand with conservation on this?
So this was a classic chicken and the egg. They were waiting to get some feedback from you before they made their final decision. We are, we do have an active permit in front of them. Um, we've had one hearing. And um, you know, I don't anticipate that this would change anything, you know, overall, we're, we're providing more compensatory storage with the addition of these, you know, areas for stormwater to be collected. Um, so we're actually lowering the, you know, the grade of the site, so I'm not too concerned that, you know, we're not gonna be able to meet the standards for compensatory storage. All the other grades are the same or, or lower, so um, I think they're just waiting to hear your, your opinion.
You're slowing down to the east, right?
Uh, it slopes well, so there's a little bit of a bench right here. This eastern portion is probably three feet lower than the rest of the site. Um, so we're not touching that other than adding some, you know, some trees, some native trees. Um, but everything else is up further on the existing developed portion of the site.
How far is, Jeff, how far is the building off of the east boundary roughly?
Uh, let's see, let me just switch my screens here. I apologize for this. Know if I've got the setback shown on here.
Uh, you, you did on the uh prior screen, because you're showing the setback for the uh, from the deck to the property line. So it's forty-one feet to the corner of the deck.
Corner of the deck, right. Yep, here you go. I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, so you're, you're, okay, so you gotta go at fifty feet of property to the east side of the building.
Yes.
Okay, just wondering.
Yep.
And the, the stair, is that, is that being added to the existing footprint?
It's being added to the side of the building, yes, over what is existing parking area, but yes.
So would that require?
It's funny that where, where the slab is, is just outside of the flood zone. Everything else, all the rest of the site is, is within floodplain. It's, it's right at that elevation.
So is the stairs, now next question, you're adding the stairs. Does that throw off your sideline?
Right.
Setback.
Because aren't you already existing non-compliant?
Uh, yes.
That would make you more non-compliant, or is that a side yard? What's the, what's the front yard? Is the front yard north?
No, the, the Babe Road side is not a side yard, Bill. That's a front yard.
Yeah, I guess it is, so uh.
The front and front setback is fifty feet, yeah.
But you're on, it's a corner lot, so you need the, to maintain the front setback from both sides.
No, traditionally, didn't traditionally, Bill, we would offer them to the choice of what it is going to be the front yard.
The zoning by law specific, if you have a corner lot or frontage on two streets, they shall both be treated as front yard setbacks.
So he's an existing non-compliant. I, I don't think he's got fifty feet to the building.
No, but he's adding, making it more non-conforming by adding this, the stairway.
Right, right. He could add this, he could add it on the east side, but I don't.
Backside, right.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a very good point that I don't think anybody had picked up on. Yep.
Now, s- sorry, I'm an. Now, s- sorry, I'm an artichoke.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Didn't notice that.
Yeah.
That's why we have five of us.
Yep. So that'll need, that'll need an amendment, yep.
Is there, I was trying to think, is there any way to do? Some kind of, uh. Retention or detention on that east border, or is it all, is it gonna, what doesn't? Um, percolate, will, will sheet flow onto the butter? Um, or again, is, is that not us, that's, that's con con?
Yeah, I mean, we're really, we're, we're reducing the amount of runoff that goes to this area. Um, but this, there's, this, this rises up again to the pride site further east. So, you know, if this were to ever flood, it would come out onto Bay Road before it would get up onto their, onto their property.
That, that was something that came out to some people's surprise during the pride, uh. Uh, development, because it turns out a lot of the work they were doing. Uh, people were surprised to see there all the clearing they were doing on that lot immediately to the east of this parcel. But it turned out that much of it was actually outside Conservation Commission jurisdiction, because it was slightly higher.
Okay, well, I mean, you, I, I agree with the other board members, Mr. Squire, you've done a real good job of trying to address traffic flow and stacking and stuff like that, with the given the property. That probably about, except for the minor change of the radiuses, that's about as good as we're gonna get. Can you go back to the sheet that's more representational of the current design?
Yes.
Yeah. I know that one had, had the setback, but.
Right, yeah, no, I pause it, somehow these got split up, so I apologize.
Okay.
So I think, yeah, I mean, we'd obviously have to relocate this stair, I'm thinking it may, you know, could potentially work back in this corner here. Or on this, off this end of the building even.
Yeah, you might be close to fifty feet over there. Only, only if you're off to fifty feet.
Yep.
Yeah, I think you're gonna have to use your rear or side yard, whatever that east side is.
Yep.
Are we, uh, Mr. Chairman, are we up to voting, or do we? I don't know, we, we're gonna. Come back with. You're gonna come back, he, he, this was a, I don't wanna call it a conceptual drawing, but it was an idea drawing before they do all that. With the rest of the drainage and everything else, so they wanted to see what we thought of this particular drawing on the screen in front of us. Um, before he gets too far into the other things.
Right.
So.
Um, so my to-do list is coming out like this. Um. You wanna take a look at adjusting your parking? By designating some reserve parking? Or going for the transfer development rights route? Um, which would cost roughly ten thousand dollars to get a little less parking. It seems, it's probably not a great deal for, to pay ten thousand dollars to get rid of. Two hundred, uh, square feet or whatever.
Right.
Ninety-two.
You could probably widen your lanes by one foot all the way around the site and get it.
And we, you need to address the, uh, the fire lane issue with the fire chief in front of the. Where, where you, oh, you presently have about twelve feet for your service area, you need to get that out to twenty. Uh, relocate the stairs out of the front yard setbacks on both sides. Either a design change or decide to go for a variance. And of course, then we need, we need the final, the final drawings, a, 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 a full set of final drawings incorporating.
Yes.
Everything.
Correct.
Um, Jeff, I shouldn't d- design out loud, but the, the. Um, when you're, when you're there getting your coffee, that, in that eleven and a half foot lane. If you had to widen that by eight feet to get his twenty feet, could you do it in that grass area with your turf pave? And I, I don't know what you mean by that, I know I've seen in Europe where they have like the concrete pavers. That have openings and there's grass growing, you know, I, I think I went to the airport in Italy and they actually mow the parking lot.
Yeah, so I mean, something like that, there's a couple of different products, but that was the idea with this area here, just to deter, you know, regular use. And make it look, you know, more similar to the adjacent, you know, term for grass.
Okay.
Yeah.
That might be, uh, somewhere where you, you could keep some. Some, uh, permeability, but still be able to carry their vehicles.
Sure, exactly.
Okay, I actually did that at the rear of the courtyard by Marriott, we actually have a fire lane behind there, that's all, all that, that grass with the, uh. You know, the circles in the ground there.
Yeah. Behind the Marriott, okay. Sorry, Bill, I think I interrupted you.
No, that was, uh, that was, those are the, the four.
Yep.
Points that I had there. I was just going to take a look at a calendar and suggest a, uh.
Yeah. Two, two weeks is too soon to come back, Mr. Squire?
I don't think so, no, I mean, we, this, you know, we were able to pull this together pretty quickly, so I think in the interest of time, it would be good to. Keep it moving if we can.
So, October eighteenth might be good for you?
I think that should be fine.
Okay, we'll put you on for the thirteenth, there's a continuation. We do have PVC, you know, Pine Valley Bank coming there that night, but I think this will take too long if we got the items addressed.
Okay.
Because November first is the first Tuesday of November, but it's also Election Day. And we can't hold a public hearing on that day. So if it isn't the eighteenth of October, the next day would be the fifteenth of November.
Yep.
So.
I, I have, uh, November eighth as election day.
Well, November eighth, I thought it was the first, okay. Yeah. Oh, I'm off. Okay, well, that's the case, then, yes, I think you're right, I don't why I put the first Tuesday.
Hmm. Yeah, I, I, we still should be able to be, be able to make the eighteenth, so that should be fine, if that's, okay with the board, yeah.
Okay. All right. Hey, Jim, uh, philosophical question, if, let's say he did his whole driveway with those turf pave. Could he count that as green space and as parking? No, one or the other. Okay.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm sure the Conservation Commission is gonna be looking for elevation, so.
Yeah. Yeah, now, we've, we've got a pretty clear, clear diagram of, of the flood storage capacities, so. We should be prepared. But thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Jeff, for responding our, our concerns.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is a tough one, do you do puzzle, picture puzzles?
Yeah.
I may start, though, because this has been a challenge, for sure. Um, and the only other one, the only other topic, I, I don't know, and I don't know whether now is the right time, is the garden center, whether now is a good time, last time, the material was submitted too late. At least for the board to discuss, so I don't know whether now is the appropriate time, or.
The what?
The garden center, gardener supply.
Oh, yeah, okay. Hadley Garden Center?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, we did, we did continue that one to today too, I believe.
Well, and I think, yeah, so I think the, um. Let's see, this one, yeah, so, um, yeah, at least based on my understanding. The board had agreed to waive site plan approval pending, you know, approval from, um. Reviewing engineer looking at stormwater primarily for the, for the two eighty-seven parcel. Um, and so there's been a little bit of back and forth with regards to access lanes and, and managing that stormwater. And what was forwarded last week was a letter from Bucky Sparkles noting that the, um. That the plan as, you know, as shown here, which is an, uh, uh, an update from the previous version. Um, is a reduction in impervious even on the existing site, and so just, um. Just so that the board is aware, what we had shown previously is this. This delivery loop in the back would come through, circulate through the back of the site. And the original plan showed an access aisle or an access road that would exit back out onto this easternmost curb cut. And that increased pavement area, particularly behind the building here. Increased the, the size of this detention base into the point where it really didn't make much sense. And so what we've done is we've eliminated that drive aisle. Turn this parking lot ninety degrees so that vehicle, that delivery vehicles now will exit out. The, the western curb cut, which is also being retained, we'll close the eastern one. Um, but that will facilitate, you know, truck access out of the site. And this will remain, the two eighty-seven property will remain, just as it did before, as a, as an employee, you know, parking area. Uh, there's a gated entrance, there's a little bit of additional pavement to finish out this portion of the parking lot. Um, but otherwise, it's, it's a reduction in, in impervious for that portion of the site, which is what the. Um, which is what the reviewing engineer had, had noted, so. Um. That's the, that.
What, what were you putting there, Jeff, where, where we currently park between Route nine and the existing building? Is that, is that gonna be lawn?
Yes.
Pedestrian access there, like.
This, so this area up here will be converted to lawn.
But I mean, right in front of the building where people park currently.
Right, right here? That'll be sidewalk.
No, the main building.
Oh, out here?
The garden building.
This will be, this is gonna remain as asphalt, it'll be outdoor display area.
Oh, all right.
They, they're running new fencing across the front of the property. Um, you know, four foot high, sort of a, a nicer looking aluminum. Style fence rather than chain link or something like that, but this is all gonna be, you know, their, their display. Retail display area is right here now, they're trying to consolidate, consolidate it, so it's not spread out all over the site.
Okay, I was trying to figure out what your shading, so your shading is the existing asphalt, and that's remaining.
Exactly.
But it will be displayed, not vehicular access.
Right, right, they're gonna have a gated access, you know, along, along the western edge of the, of this pro- portion of the property.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that, is that new pavement going back, uh, off the west side of the existing garden building, it looks like a path going back?
Here.
No. Over where it says loading, you know, where your text is, loading platform, existing.
Over here.
No, no, further west.
Further west.
Right there, you were just on it, that, what's that strip of shading?
So they've got, they've got a paved aisle down the center of their.
Oh, is it actually paved? I, I thought it was all gravel, okay.
Yeah, no, it's, it's funny, I had to go out there two or three times to make sure that that was the case.
Okay.
But, yeah, there is a paved aisle there.
What's the address of this, Jeff?
Address is two eighty-five and two eighty-seven, Russell.
Okay. Jim, uh, Chief Spackable has his hand up.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chief. Mike, go ahead, you're on mute. You're muted.
Sorry about that, um, I haven't seen this plan yet, will there be, uh. I'm just kinda curious if that's gonna be all display, you're now taking away our fire access in the front of the building? Is, are we planning a different area for fire access now?
So there is an emergency gate, there is a, you know, eighteen foot wide gate here, so that there is access, you know, vehicle access in emergency if, if necessary.
Okay, so we'll, just gonna make that, we gotta, um. So the NFPA standard now is, we just gotta meet that standard for the fire access. And it should be clearly labeled around the building, obviously, I think you have enough room if it's gonna stay the same way, but you were talking about displays and stuff, is that, that gonna be in that driveway, is that?
Right, I mean, it's, it's very similar to what their current use is, they're just eliminating the parking out in front and vehicle access out.
Okay, so there'll still be a clear pathway through the front of the building?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Spackable, how wide does that slip pathway need to be? Does it need to be twenty feet or thirty?
It should, it should comply with the NFPA standard, the twenty feet, we should have that access in front of the building.
Okay.
And I believe this is almost thirty now.
Yeah, it's definitely wide enough now, I'm just, um.
Yeah.
Even with the parking there. The, um, so the, I can't really see with the dotted line, but you have parking spaces where the old, uh, daycare used to be.
On this side, yes.
Yeah, we used to have access on that side to both buildings as well, will that now be eliminated, or? You have parking, you have parking spaces that are all in this, in that, uh, on the northern end, right, right to the right as you come in that entrance there, or that exit. On the right.
This, you're talking here?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so that's, I mean, there is parking there now. Um, this, this currently comes back to a dead end, um. Let's see. This is sort of like, this is the current configuration, so this comes back to a dead end. Lot back here, and so what we're doing is providing a, you know, an access, a through lane essentially, that, that allows you to. You know, circumnac- na- nak- navigate both sites, so you can go through and exit, you know, either way, but. Um.
So if we pull into the front of the building and use that access in front, will we be able to continue forward and go back out onto Route nine?
Uh, I believe so, I don't think they have any intentions of fencing this area here.
Because that's open now, that is currently an open access for us, so that way, we're pretty. We'd have to figure out, uh, normally, we, we don't like having to, normally it's some sort of a hammerhead, I don't. I don't know what the side of that building is gonna be, if it's gonna be pack gravel where we could, you know, drive along that, uh, eastern side of that structure, and then go out, I don't, I don't know.
Sure. Yeah, I think. Most of this is compacted gravel and, and what is this, you know, sort of white area internal to the site now. Um. But we can certainly work with you to clarify, you know, access in and through the site.
Mr. Squire, do you have my email address or my contact info, it's on?
I believe I do.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So I can, we can, I can, I'll touch base with you this week and we can, we can look at this.
Thank you.
Is that a twenty-foot lane at the south, the one that sweeps, but yeah, I can't read that dimension.
Yes.
That's twenty feet.
Yeah.
That's, and it's twenty feet when it comes by the parking over by the school?
Over this side, yes.
Where it's just twenty-six spaces, that's, that's a twenty-foot lane, okay.
This is a twenty-two foot wide lane, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
So then would it be wise to mark? Say the last, the, the northernmost two spaces in that batch of eleven? As, uh, fire access, as a no parking zone? So that the truck, because you don't want the truck to come in, deal with the building issue, and then find, uh, employee cars blocking it at the other end, I would think.
Right, because it looks like you got a handicap parking at the west end. Of the front, existing, right, yeah.
Yeah, where's that, yeah, where is this gate that you were talking about?
So there's one here. There.
Oh, yeah, I don't think he'd be able to get his trucks there.
Yeah.
At least, I mean, he could get through, but he couldn't navigate between buildings.
So one, one of the things that we could do is take these. Couple of spaces here and move them to this side.
Yeah, yeah.
And leave, leave a, an emergency access lane, that would allow you to get all the way through. And I was looking at this, and what we would probably do is open this up here. So that we don't lose quite as many parking spaces, but then there could be an emergency lane that could exit the site.
This is, yeah, that's, we're assuming his trucks are coming eastbound.
Yeah, and either way, they would have access into this, you know, into this.
Right.
Because when the, when Amherst comes to, uh.
Sure.
To support the, uh, Hadley, they're gonna come from the other direction, so they'll be pulling the other way.
You'll have them coming and going.
Yep, so, uh, I guess if you wanna bring those back in ten weeks.
Yeah.
With those revisions, if that works for everybody, and make sure that you run them by the chief. In advance.
Great.
Is anything from Mr. Quinlan on that? Or is that not a building permit project?
Everything looks good with me.
Oh, thanks, Tommy.
At this point.
Yeah, yeah. At this level, at this level of detail, right?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for Mr. Squire? All right. See you in two weeks, Jeff.
Super. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.
That was two eighty-five, two eighty-seven.
Correct. I have nothing else. Do you have any, anybody have anything else?
Yeah, just a question to, uh, Tom Quinlan. Are you directing anyone who is looking for a building permit to go before the Conservation Commission or is that just some hearsay?
We. No, we're not hearing you. You got to speak right into the center of your.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. So any, any permits to sign off for conservation? Yeah, I mean, in, you know, any building or whatever permit, I do task it for a, a sign off.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And Dee Dee wanted to ask a quick question if you had a second for, um, Domino's.
Yeah, uh, Jim and Bill, I had sent you that.
Yeah, he, he, he came.
Yeah, you will, you will, you'll be getting, go ahead, Mr. Dwyer.
Okay, we said that, uh, we okayed it for forty-five days and asked him to come back December sixth to either extend the signage or to have it down by then. He wanted, he wanted to have it up until, uh, spring.
Yeah, he wanted to have it up until the students graduate.
Yeah, correct. And I just wanted to make sure. So you're okay with all three of them?
Yes, we're, we're okay. The, the motion is we've approved his signs, temporary signs for advertising for help um, until twelve, six, twenty-two, at which time he'll come back to us and either try to extend it or take them down.
Okay. Yeah, it was suggested that it wasn't advertising for the business.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it, it, everybody, I mean, I didn't, but almost all businesses are going through this hardship right now trying to find help. And to say you can't do it. Yeah, I mean, technically it may not be quite legal. However, we're putting all these, the, 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 the ZBA would be go crazy if we asked them to go, to go off for a variance. So we justified under the temporary sign thing.
And, and that's why, that's what I, I told him. I had said that, um, you know, I, I, we understand, we want to help the businesses and everything, but originally he wanted it till like June. And I said, you definitely have to, you know, talk to the board about that because.
And then we told them the same thing that, you know, we can approve a temporary one, but that's, that's a bit long.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure then. So when he does come back to me for the sign.
You'll be getting an email shortly on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, speaking of, uh, employment issues, if you know anybody who's looking for work, UMass and the five colleges are having another job fair this Thursday.
Yeah.
They're just like.
I heard Mr. Zagradis looking for a new part-time job for the winter.
Keep on smiling.
Bluebonnet Diner stopped serving breakfast on Mondays. They can't get the help.
I noticed Stop and Shop closes at ten now instead of midnight. That must have happened during COVID. I missed that.
So.
Yeah, I don't think I have gone into a store that doesn't have a help wanted sign.
Exactly right.
Yeah, it, I mean, I mean, just, just drive down the highway on an interstate and look at, I mean, everybody looking for truck drivers, but when companies start advertising for help on the sides of trucks for, for warehouse help, but every other things. I mean, they're, they're not just looking for truck drivers. They're looking for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, minimum wage laws are irrelevant now. Everybody's paying more than minimum wage by quite a bit.
Yeah. So, anyway, okay. Anything else? I have nothing. Mr. Dwyer, all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, no.
Yep.
Mike, pick you up.
Thanks, hi.
Yeah, motion to adjourn?
So moved. And I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Meeting is history. Thank you and thank you, Alex.